With us this evening. My name is Mally Rosado, I'm the Council President for the Court of Common Council of the City of Hartford. And I would like to call this Committee of the Whole meeting of Monday, May 22nd, 2023, to order. This meeting is being broadcasted and streamed from Hartford Public Access TV, Comcast's Infinity Channel 96, and Frontier Channel 6032. This evening, I would like to recognize my colleagues. To my right is Assistant Majority Leader Marilyn Rosati, followed by Councilman Almila Hernandez, and then Councilwoman Shirley Sargent. To my left is our town clerk Noel McGregor, followed by Councilman John Gailed, followed by Councilman Mixtum. And through the virtual platform on our screen, we have Councilwoman Tiana Hercules, Councilman Nick Lebron, Corporation Consul Alexandra Lombardi. This evening, our Committee of the Whole is from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And on our agenda, we have two items. First item on our agenda is Item 2.1, Mayor Bronin with a company resolution confirming the appointment of Ebony Jackson Shaheed to the position of Director of Health and Human Services. And Item 2.2 is calling for a resolution report to Consul from Chairman and CEO of the Metropolitan District Commission on the status progress in addressing certain flooding issues. And also, I was informed that besides Mr. DeBella, Mr. Scott Jealouson, we also have District Legal Consul, Mr. Chris Stone, and we will hear from them after our Agenda 2.1. So with that said, welcome everyone. And I would like to call first Ms. Ebony Jackson Shaheed to the table. So while she's getting situated, I am going to read over what the mayor said regarding the appointment of Ebony Jackson Shaheed as Director of the Health and Human Services. Whereas the mayor has nominated Ms. Ebony Jackson Shaheed for the position of Director of Health and Human Services, and whereas Ms. Jackson Shaheed holds a Bachelor of Science in Health Education from Montclair State University, and a Master of Public Health and Epidemiology from SUNY Downstate Medical Center, and whereas Ms. Jackson Shaheed has extensive experience in the field of public health, epidemiology, and community health, now therefore be it resolved that the Court of Common Council hereby confirms the appointment of Ms. Ebony. So with that said, you have the floor for a brief introduction and remarks.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, City Council President, council members, and guests tonight. I am Ebony Jackson Shaheed. I am a public health executive that was born and raised in New Haven, Connecticut. I call myself a Connecticutore, since my grandfather's family have been here documented before the 1700s. And I pride myself in continuing his legacy. I have an educational background in health education and public health with a concentration in epidemiology. As an epidemiologist, I completed my postgraduate fellowship at the Yale School of Medicine in Neurology with a focus in epilepsy and psychiatric disorders. I am a published scientific author and continue to promote research opportunities for local health. I have over 10 years' experience in various spectrums of public health, including health education as a teacher, sexual health education with juvenile incarcerated population, behavioral health as a behaviorist for developmentally disabled individuals with co-occurring psychiatric disorders, community health experience as a community program developer, research as a researcher for six years at the VA in Yale, and executive leadership. Recently, I just completed a two-year tenure as a Director of Health and Social Services for the City of Bridgeport, where I managed over 65 employees and managed a total budget of $8.8 million. I completed my priorities of FAB accreditation, reorganization of the Housing Code led, and BLIGHT division, implementation of a Disease Surveillance and Research Division, and implementation of the Social Services Department within 1.5 years. These priorities were accomplished while being in a public health emergency. I am also a member of, to the Governor's Opioid Crisis Committee and serve on the Research and Data Subcommittee. I serve as a Public Health Advisory Board Member for multiple universities in Connecticut, and I am also a member of multiple epidemiologists and mental health associations throughout the state of Connecticut. As a public health practitioner, my focus is population health status and public health issues facing the entire community. Through interdisciplinary team collaborations with city, state, and community stakeholders, it is my goal to improve health outcomes. My current priorities for the City of Hartford Department of Health and Human Services are as follows: Disease Prevention and Public Health Promotion, basically learning how to live in a post-COVID society; Grants and Program Management, opioid prevention and mental health; Departmental Organization and Professional Development; Rodent Control and FAB Accreditation. And I would just like to say that it is an honor to serve the residents of our capital city and the town in which my mother also resides. At this time, I would like to open it to questions.
Thank you. And we have here with us Leanne Arroyo, who now I have to say was our Health Director, but we love seeing her. So welcome again to this room. You know, when Mayor Bronin spoke to me and said that he had someone in mind, and my biggest concern, without him telling me who it was, was, does this person speak Spanish? Because we were so lucky having Leanne that, you know, can get in front of a microphone and speak both languages. But I know now that, you know, with Carmen Chaparro working next to you, that gap will be filled, and we won't have to suffer, our community won't have to suffer, you know, again through that communication. So, welcome to our city. My question to you is, what do you think, what is your vision, your first 90 days in the Department of Health? What do you vision?
Well, I think right now, what I'm doing is a general assessment of what the city needs. I'm reading through all of the various documents and transition plans that were provided for me, and then also just looking at the priorities. Not only, you know, the priorities of the mayor, but the priorities of the City Council, and then just seeing how they align up for what we're going to do moving forward. But right now, you know, the priority is already set for me. If there's anything that needs to be added, you know, to the priorities based on what the residents need, then I'm all here for it.
Thank you. I'll come to my other questions later. Assistant Majority Rosati, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. I'm so glad you're with us. When, you know, when I first saw your resume, I was so very impressed. Really, really impressed. And, you know, I really, I don't have a lot to say, but you said something. So, you know, I never have a lot to say, right, Director, past Director Arroyo? But when you said, "How to live in a past COVID society", that really struck me because the council body that's sitting here now, we were elected for about two months, maybe three, and then we had our first meeting on COVID, and really spent almost the last three years focusing on that. And someone who works in, with people experiencing homelessness, just how in tune the city was with our community, and how we really had less people die, quite frankly. But it is a learned experience, how to go back to, as someone who just stopped wearing a mask at work, maybe like three or four weeks ago. It is something that is, how do you go back to that? But how do you also stay vigilant for the next time, even though we hope that's not going to happen? But I love that you said that, and I really look forward to exploring that with you and really helping us, you know, live with what I think sometimes, particularly for, I think, younger people and all people, is trauma from what happened. And how do we get past that? So I appreciate that you said that. I welcome you to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Can you state again those five priorities? I only were able to capture two: Disease Prevention, Rodent Control, and that's where I couldn't keep up with it. So can you just mention them again real quick?
Sure. Disease Prevention and Public Health Promotion, Grant and Program Management, Opioid Prevention and Mental Health, Departmental Organization and Professional Development, Rodent Control, and FAB Accreditation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I wanted to know, because I needed to at least, and thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Shirley Sargent?
Thank you, Council President, and welcome. And thank you for considering working for us, residents for the City of Hartford. I also, looking at your resume, I'm very impressed with your credentials, especially being, you know, an epidemiologist. That is really impressive in today's day with all these diseases going on. Couple things, can't find my notes here. As you were speaking, I was writing down, and Bridgeport is a little bit larger than Hartford. I think the third largest, I think one of the three largest cities in, you know, Bridgeport, New Haven, than Hartford. So, if you were to look back at your time in Bridgeport, and even your time at any of the other organizations if you worked for, what would you say is your best accomplishment?
That's interesting. I wouldn't say that I had a best accomplishment. I look at things more as experiences. So I think, I think my best accomplishment is probably bringing people together that are at the table. I hear I have a knack for that. So I think going into Bridgeport, not being a local in Bridgeport, I think that it was important that organizations, you know, I think they trusted my expertise and they were willing to, you know, to work with me and knew that the mission was, you know, for the residents and not for any, you know, not for anything personally. So I think that, I think that that would probably be my greatest accomplishment.
Oh, I think it's great because it's, just like New Haven, we have a large diverse community here. As the Council President says, we have a large Latino community. Sometimes the barriers, you know, to communication is, you know, our language. So, you know, that's impressive that you have a staff, you have multicultural staff to address that. One of the things in my family, I've got a couple research nurses out of NYU and Columbia in New York. And as I saw you did some research, and I'm saying, one of the things they have issues with is trying to get minorities to actually participate in research that really would affect them and affect some treatment. What have been your experience?
That's interesting. I think that, so in Bridgeport, we did something very unique during COVID. We actually started designing a study while people were getting their vaccinations. And actually, we did submit an abstract to NACHO, which got accepted, and the Deputy Director of Health actually went to Atlanta and presented that research. But I think when you're doing research, I think people feel comfortable around people who look like them. So I think that's really important in terms of representation. And I also think going to where people feel comfortable was really important, too. So a lot of times when you are doing research, most people try to recruit individuals to come to their locations. So we really didn't do that. We went to where the people actually feel comfortable. So whether that's faith-based organizations, community centers, like where people often congregate naturally. I think that's really important. So that was something that made us successful.
Oh, that's good to know. I'll pass on your advice to my two nieces. One of the things, you also mentioned your priorities of the opioid. And as you know, it's become a large issue in the urban areas. What have you done in your past? What has happened in Bridgeport? How did you guys start beginning to address those issues? And would you carry some of those best practices that you have learned, you know, here to Hartford?
I definitely will. I think that it's very, very difficult to look at an issue like opioid prevention and then make it measurable when it comes to a large organization. I think one of the things that we had done in Bridgeport was couple it with mental health or mental illness. And so then, when you're devising programming to deal with kind of like the roots of why, you know, people may be using opioids, then it helps with, you know, the issues. And so that's what I plan to do here. And so that's why you see when it says opioid prevention, there is a slash mental health aspect to it, because we need to approach some of the root issues around opioid use.
Yeah, that is so true. And one of the major, another issue that we have right here in Hartford, I'm so proud of all the new constructions going on, but as you know, with new constructions, what happens? Our friends come out. I wouldn't say friends, but, you know, we have a lot of friends that, you know, that comes and visit. How did you guys address those issues in Bridgeport?
So that issue is still being addressed in Bridgeport. I think just like a lot of large cities around Connecticut. I think, you know, once we all found out that the pesticides that we're using may not be the best for the environment, right now, lots of cities are looking at how to package it with alternative pesticides, and so approach it more holistically. And so that's what, you know, I'll be looking at as well.
Oh, thank you for saying that. Because I'm big on this, the green issue and all the green jobs and with climate change. So absolutely, you know, is what we're putting in our earth that's going to make a difference. I think those are my rodent and grants. So do you, you know, we have a grants department here in the city, and in your experience, especially coming out of New York, would you be able to, you know, give us some directions of where, you know, we may apply for grants federally or state that may help, you know, alleviate some of our costs here in the city?
Well, I will give kudos to the Department of Health right behind me. The Department of Health, this team is amazing already. I'm walking in, and the grants, they have written so many grants already. To be honest with you, they are ahead of the game. So at this point, whatever knowledge I have of grants, I'm just adding to the team, because they have so much knowledge about grant writing already. I think that it's important to know the difference between our state grants and federal. I think in terms of maybe any type of direction that I could give, it would be to maybe look at adding some more federal grants. But other than that, I mean, they really have it down pat already.
Well, thank you, and thanks to the young lady behind you. She has done an awesome job in, especially using the grants to partnership with other organizations within the city, and that has made a difference. You know, bringing in the youth. One of the things I was very impressed with, you know, is bringing in the youth and, you know, utilizing grants to bring the youth and listening to what they have to say, you know, regarding, you know, health and how healthy their cities are. So thank you for giving our City of Hartford kudos. I always, it's always nice to hear some good things, because we get beat up so often with everything. But welcome to our city. I look forward to working with you. And I would love to see, after you finish your maybe three to six months' assessment, you know, I mean, as, you know, what would your, you know, what we can do better? Because I think we're doing some great things. But it's always good to see what we can do better. So we're looking forward to seeing your assessment, you know, and, you know, if it's whatever support you need. I think the council have been extremely supportive from the past Health Director, and would love to do the same thing for you to make your employment here with us a success. So thank you and welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Gail?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I note that you're coming to us from Bridgeport, and you may know that the director into who you're following also came to us from Bridgeport. So you're following a very strong line here. Couple of things that, you know, you indicated in your remarks that you're going to assess the direction that you see the city going and the direction that you hear from council. I just give you a couple of things that are hanging out there that you may want to address at some point. This council body did adopt an ordinance on regulation of nail salons and hair salons. And that ordinance, while adopted, I'm going to say more than four years ago, has never been put into regulations. I don't believe that we're doing any of the required inspections. So I would encourage you, when you have a free moment, to take a look at that ordinance and see if the City of Hartford can't start doing what we all felt was pretty, a fairly important, fairly important job. The second ordinance is similarly an ordinance that was passed probably about four plus years ago. It was a single-use plastic bag ban. And in passing that ordinance, Hartford led the state. We passed that ordinance, and weeks later, the State of Connecticut adopted a similar ordinance statewide. And then shortly after that, COVID hit, and all rules went out the window. So just at the time when everybody started to really get with it and were bringing bags with them everywhere, COVID allowed folks to relapse. And I've noted that I'm not, it's not clear to me that folks have gotten back onto the, gotten back with the program. And you'll note in going around Hartford that litter is a huge problem here. And part of, you know, part of this ban was not only an environmentally friendly ordinance, but it was one with a very practical design to try to reduce the amount of litter here in town as well. So I throw those two ordinances out to you for something to look at. And last comment, I'm assuming you're aware that Hartford has a residency requirement for its director, including its Director of Health. You haven't mentioned where you're living, and I'm just wondering what your plans are in that regard.
So I am currently looking for an apartment. You know, I seen something over the weekend, and I'm going to continue to do my search. But I am in the process of moving.
Excellent. Welcome to Hartford.
Thank you.
Councilman Mixtum?
Thank you, Madam President. You do have six months, so no rush. I, I'm glad you're here, you know, like you're eminently qualified, and I think we're all just, we feel lucky that you came here. So, you know, I would start by saying that. And one thing I feel like I will say that I have observed with your predecessor is that your position, this position, because it is so rooted in science and data, the person in your position can speak with a certain authority and moral clarity that I think none of us can, right? Like, we sort of come with our particular things that we care about and that we advocate for. But your work really touches all the other things in the city, right? I mean, traffic violence that we maybe think of as a planning issue or a police issue is a health issue, right? Litter is a health issue. Housing is a health issue. And so I guess what I have found, and I hope you will keep it in mind, is that you will surely have the opportunity to, just by sharing and educating us on the health impacts of what we might not think of as health things, you are uniquely positioned to guide policy across the city. And you said you're good at bringing people to the table and getting them to talk together. And I expect that will be a big duty, not just within your department, but among other directors. So, you know, heavy is the head that wears the crown, no pressure. But I feel like, I hope you'll realize that you have that particular power and use it on us.
Thank you. I will.
Councilwoman Tiana Hercules?
Thank you. Through you, Council President. Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Jackson Shaheed. Really excited to work with you. Certainly, Director Arroyo will be sorely missed, but excited that someone just as dynamic is stepping into her shoes. Having worked in urban centers, certainly the social determinants of health are very familiar to you. Kind of piggybacking off of Councilman Mixtum's comments, can you talk a little bit about your work in addressing some of those social determinants of health in the urban areas you've worked with? And particularly speak to the collaboration that was required? If you maybe want to pick, like, one example of an issue, and how you were able to work with those outside of the health realm to draw attention to those issues that impact health?
Sure. I think my biggest example of working with social determinants of health is food insecurity. I worked for an organization, City Harvest, in New York. Amazing organization. They literally take food from farms, surplus vegetables, produce, and they bring it to the inner city and set up these, kind of like these shops within housing projects, and they give it out for free. And I think one of the first programs that I helped design was around making healthy food choices for schools. So we wrote this program called Healthy, off of Healthy Neighborhoods, but it was Healthy Schools, so infiltrating the school system. I don't know if anyone knows how difficult it is to infiltrate school foods, but they are an entirely different breed. So we tried to infiltrate them and change the food options on the menu for children in schools. But not only did we work with school food, we also worked with neighborhood stores in the neighborhoods and basically had an incentive program where we brought some of the produce from City Harvest to these bodegas that were in the neighborhood. And we gave that produce as an incentive, because it's free food that they were able to sell. And then they changed some of the menus for the children in the neighborhood. So instead of like ham and cheese on a roll, it was, you know, turkey and, you know, an egg white, you know, on a roll. And then we also taught them how to bring some of the healthier options in the store to the forefront, instead of it being more processed. So food insecurity is a huge social determinant, especially in our urban communities. And we know that a lot of people use some of these bodegas as a primary sources for groceries. And so we taught people in the community, especially children, how to, you know, choose healthier options. You go through the children, you get to the parents. And so I think that's probably one of my best examples, because it was really just all hands on deck and utilizing so many different resources, you know, in the community, on the state level, citywide. City Harvest is an amazing organization for that.
Great. Thank you so much for that example.
Are you outside, Councilwoman?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge our Majority Leader, Councilman TJ Clark, who's been on the screen. Councilman Nick Lebron, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam President. Ms. Shaheed Jackson, such a dynamic resume. Very, very impressive and such a talent. But one of the things that I wanted to ask was, in regards to, I think on two occasions, you mentioned past experiences of engaging the community. And I think one of your plans was talking about how to engage the community, I think in your first six months. Could you tell us how you would approach engaging the community here in Hartford? And what would be, like, different and unique to the Hartford community engagement in comparison to, you know, Bridgeport?
You know what? It's so new right now, that I don't really know what the differences would be. I would approach it the same. The first thing I'm doing right now was just gathering data. So one of the first things that, you know, myself and the team are doing is just making a master list, data list, of all organizations, community organizations, healthcare organizations in the City of Hartford, and then just reaching out to them, letting them know that I am actually here, that there has been a transition, and then start on working on committees. And then start on working on committees. And that's something that, you know, has been done in Bridgeport. And as of right now, I would approach it the same way in Hartford. And, you know, once I'm here a little bit longer and I see some, you know, differences and nuances, then we'll, we'll change the approaches.
Thank you. Great answer. So in terms of community leaders, I understand the community-based organizations. Well, Hartford is blessed with a lot of community leaders who do a lot of work in this area, who are not necessarily tied to community-based organizations. What would, what would your approach be to, like, the individual leaders in our community to try to help the work of, to try to help the work of your department?
I'm sorry, if you could repeat it, I'm having some difficulty hearing. Your, your connection is, is not as clear.
Okay. So in terms of community leaders, and through you, Madam Chair, in terms of community leaders, can you guys hear me?
I, I can. If you can talk a little softer, Councilman.
Softer?
Yeah. Or Michael, can you bring down the volume just a little bit?
Oh, okay. All right. I'll talk softer. So in terms of community leaders and folks who are engaged in the, the health work and the Health and Human Services work in the community, but are not connected to a community-based organization, what would be the plan in terms of engaging them?
So that's, that's an interesting one because usually we are obviously engaged with those we know about. But I think for, for individuals who aren't involved with some community work, but are not yet visible, I think part of moving forward would be for us to be more visible so that they can reach out to us as well. I think that that's something that we're working on at the Health Department, is making ourselves a little bit more visible to the community, being more transparent. So I think I would start out with that. And then it's also a part of networking. So the more I'm here, the more networking abilities I'll have as well to maybe find, you know, who else, you know, I can work with in the community.
Thank you. And just one last specific question to you, Madam President. There was an article in the Hartford Current about our feral cat population. I know you discussed rodent control. I assume they're linked, rodents and the cat population, but what specifically could we do to decrease the amount of feral cats that are in Hartford?
Is that a question for me? Okay. So if we're dealing with any type of wild animals, we would definitely contact Animal Control. So that is, that is their responsibility to handle any, you know, any wild animals such as feral cats. But I will say, on the upside, or being optimistic about the feral cats, they do help with rodent control. They are a natural predator for rodents. So while we're working on animal control, they can help us with the, the rodent control in the city.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Majority Leader Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, Ms. Jackson Shaheed, impressive resume. Thank you for wanting to serve the city of Hartford. My question for you is, what was your experience as Bridgeport's Health Director, working between the council and the mayor's office to push some health policy initiatives?
I'm sorry, you asked what was my, my experience with working with the city?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. So the city council in Bridgeport is rather large, but I would like to say that I had a good relationship with them and I worked well with, with the parties in terms of policies. You know, there were often times that they would come to me about something or I would approach them, you know, to get support on policies. I'd like to say I had a good relationship with them and worked well with them in terms of moving forward on various policies. We did, you know, the Blight ordinance together. We were working on the Hookah ordinances when I left. We also did the hair salons and nail salons as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I did have a question, and it was on grants, but Councilwoman Shirley Sargent asked the question, and you are correct. I mean, you know, through this council body, we, we do get all the grants and we all know how many come from the Health Department, so great job, team. So with that said, are there any other questions or comments? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Move to send this back to council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion has been.
And I stirred it also.
A motion has been made and properly second. All who wish to move this item back with a favorable recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you. And Director Arroyo, it was a pleasure seeing you again. Don't be a stranger from now on. Thank you. And now we are going to move to item 2.2 of our agenda, which is a resolution calling for a report from the, to the council from the chairman and CEO of the Metropolitan District Commission on the status progress in addition certain, in addressing certain flooding issues. Today, we have with us Mr. William Dibilla, who is the chairman of the MDC, Mr. Scott Jealouson, who is the CEO, and also we have the district legal consul, Mr. Chris Stone. And with that said, Mr. Dibilla, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Just for the record, we have received documentation and it has been shared with all council members. Can you?
How's that?
Yes. Yes.
Obviously, I am the chairman of the Metropolitan District Commission. With me this evening is our chief executive officer, who operates the Metropolitan District Commission, the board, and our chief legal consul, Commissioner, Consular Stone, and Scott Jealouson, our chief executive officer. MDC is a body, a regional body that handles both water and sewage in the greater Hartford area for eight towns. Hartford is the largest. It's composed of 29 members that are on a board and set policy for the district board. None of the members are either paid, they're all citizen members. They receive no expenses or anything else from the Metropolitan District Commission, no salaries. The chairman receives no salary, no benefits or anything else. So we're all citizen members and the operation is, its policy is set by the MDC Commission. And obviously, the chief executive officer is the chief operating officer for the Metropolitan District Commission. The question of, of before the, the body this evening is the question of flooding. Flooding has been a problem for several years. We're now in the, I believe, the 13th year of the Clean Water Project, which was to set a standard for sewer repair and control in the metropolitan district area. Those eight towns, we've spent to date about $1.7 billion on the Clean Water Project, much of which was not dealing with the issue of flooding, but more the issue of the Connecticut River and Long Island Sound. You'll hear this evening from our chief executive officer, who's been negotiating with DEEP on these issues, and the operation is directed by him relative to what we are permitted to do by DEEP on the, relative to this program. And it's a program that flooding has become a more significant issue, given the environment. I think we're all cognizant of the fact that the environment has changed dramatically just in the last 12, 13 years when we started this project. We've got massive fires in the West, we've got flooding in, in the, in the country, we've got tornadoes and every other issue. It hit us dramatically in August of 2021. That was a period of time that I would say has been probably, without a doubt, the worst situation we've had. I've served on this board in one capacity or the other for the last 40, I think, three years. I was appointed in 1975. So I have a pretty good historic understanding of what we've done and how we've done it, but more importantly, how our environment's changed dramatically. In August of 2021, we suffered three storms that week. We suffered a 100-year storm, was it 50-year storm, a 45-year storm, and a 200-year storm. As I said, I've been on this board for almost 43 years, and we have never, ever received that kind of, an environmental rainstorm in that period of time that I've been involved in this organization. Albany Avenue was an example of what had happened up there was the fire hydrants, the water was over the level of fire hydrants. So flooding has become a more significant issue relative to what we do in the city of Hartford and MDC. The last, since January, Scott, you've been negotiating with DEEP on this whole question of flooding, backups and sewers and the Clean Water Project. In December of this, of 2022, we adopted in the Clean Water Project, we went to an integrated plan. The existing plan was a shorter-term plan, it was a 12-year plan to separate all the sewers in the city of Hartford, which, when we started this, we made it very clear that 12 years wasn't going to make it, make it in that term of time. What we have done in the integrated plan, it's a 30-year stretched-out plan to deal with this whole issue of Hartford, but also the total region because it has become more a stormwater problem than a, a basic sewer problem in Hartford. It's a regional problem. So I'm going to let our chief executive officer, Scott Jealouson, explain to you what our situation has been with DEEP, with flooding in general, what the staff has done in the 13 years we've been dealing with the Clean Water Project itself. Scott, do you want to take over? And then we'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. We're going to try to make it as brief as possible.
Five minutes, right? Okay. There's a lot, there's a lot here. And I understand your question and without, I can't answer your question without giving you a little background. So, and Councilman John Gale will remember this, we asked all of our towns in, in December of 2018 to support our integrated plan. Prior to the integrated plan, DEEP approved, basically building large tunnels and collecting overflows at the river. And our position was at the MDC, we can't, our community that's paying for this can't afford to build these large tunnels to collect overflows at the river. We have infrastructure that's crumbling in every street, in water infrastructure. So we asked for the approval of what they call the Integrated Planning, which was approved by EPA in 2014. We fought with DEEP from 2018 to 2022, and they finally approved our integrated plan, which is great. But it took us four years to get approval. Prior to that, the other long-term control plans took five years, three years. So the approval process takes a long time, and unfortunately, the community suffers as we're waiting for these approvals. The challenge is, the Clean Water Project is a very defined regulatory mandate from 1974 Clean Water Act. It, it, it doesn't intend to protect communities from street flooding. It doesn't intend to protect basements from street flooding. It's intended to protect the rivers from overflows because stormwater's getting into the sewer system and overflowing to the rivers. EPA and DEEP regulate waterways of the United States. That's all they regulate. So they don't dictate to us what we do within the community, they dictate what we have to do to save the rivers, okay? So in our integrated planning, the, the priorities that were set forth in the integrated plan were dictated to us by EPA and by the state of Connecticut. Most highest priority, protect the Weathersfield Cove. Highest priority, protect the west branch, north branch of the Park River, sorry. The way in which you do that is up to us, but we have a, we have a very regimented technical requirement of what we have to do. And our, and as the chairman mentioned, our $1.6, $1.7 billion we spent to date is to do just that and nothing more. Because if we try to protect the community, in addition to, to addressing the EPA and the state regulations, the Clean Water Project would not be $1.7 billion, it would be $20 billion. So we were moving forward and we, we were meeting with EPA and meeting with the state of Connecticut in early January to go over our, our successes and go over the next, next range of 10 years of projects, which was in the North End, Blue Hills, Granby area. And the whole idea of the projects in those areas was to do one very specific thing, to eliminate four overflows. When I say an overflow, it's literally a pipe that goes to the river. And the system within the community gets full of water from stormwater, and it comes in all different ways, comes in from the streets, comes in from your basements, from your rain gutters, it mixes with the sewer, and it's got to go someplace and it overflows to the river. The only thing we were doing was to pick up and eliminate those overflows up to a one-year storm in all of Hartford, except north branch of the Park River. We had to eliminate them, just like Weathersfield Cove. How do we do that? We separate the area. Before we can separate the sewer and storm pipes in that area, we have to do a study. Why? Because we have to understand what pipe in a home, right now there's one pipe, it serves both stormwater and sewer. So you got to understand the elevation of that pipe, how much the water's coming into these pipes within the community. There's a lot of detailed engineering work that needs to be done to determine how best we eliminate this overflow. Do we do this or do we do that? Do we put a stormpipe in this street and a sewerpipe on the other street? Lots of decisions to be made. In addition to that, we're dumping this new clean stormwater in somewhere. It's got to go somewhere. It's got to go to a water body, either the Connecticut River, too far away. How do you get to the Connecticut River? The north branch of the Park River. So our plan is to dump this water into the north branch of the Park River. The problem is, the north branch of the Park River needs to be dredged. I use the example all the time, think of your bathtub. Your bathtub holds 200 gallons of water, fill your bathtub with, with two feet of sand and try to put 200 gallons of water in the bathtub. Doesn't fit. So it overflows onto the floor of your bathtub. The floor of your bathtub is Hartford, okay? So we need the river dredge. So we've been working with the city of Hartford to identify, we've got an MOU, I just signed it yesterday, a joint effort to study the needs of the north branch of the Park River, in addition to studying the separation areas within Blue Hills, Granby area. Then comes the issues that happened, as the chairman mentioned, relative to the August 19th, 2021 storm, and some other flooding incidents that occurred. And there were activists that called in EPA in the state of Connecticut. We had a number of meetings, one meeting in Aug, I'm sorry, one meeting in January, one meeting on February 6th. Since then, as the chairman mentioned, I've been working with this, with the DEEP and EPA. And the one benefit of this discussion has been the regulators, DEEP- EPA and the one benefit of this discussion has been, the regulators, DEEP and EPA have now understood that the community understands that the Clean Water Project was really only to protect the river, not to protect the community. So they have allowed us and asked us for our help, how can you benefit the community, kill two birds with one stone, from what we were going to do? That was approved by this council and the other seven councils and we have proposed something which is in front of you. Now, I'll go into that in detail, but more importantly, what we're proposing isn't regulated by DEEP or EPA, but it's, as I refer to it, as a community benefit rather than a river benefit. This costs money. So we only have so much money, this council and the other council approved the integrated plan, the IP we call it, and it's, we're only to spend 45 million dollars a year as it's escalated over time, for about 40 years. That plan has a rate structure which we have identified and the, and the towns have approved that. If we start to do this kind of stuff, which wasn't funded, we're going to blow that rate structure out of the water. So we have said to DEEP, we can do all this stuff that is local to the, to the home, local to the business, local to the street, but we can't do it without raising our rates. So the only way you can, we can achieve this is if you change your regulations to allow us, to give us money for private property work. Presently, the Clean Water Project, federal and state does not, it will not pay for private property work of any kind, nor will they pay for, at the time, dredging of the north branch of the Park River, which is about a $50 million bill. So we have got the state to a point where they have agreed to fund 50% of the private property work, which is great. But the other 50% has got to be paid for by the MDC and therefore by the customer base of the MDC. So the only way we can do it without changing the rate is we've said to DEEP and EPA, you've got to give us the 50% grant money, not just for, for North Hartford, but for all of the projects that are built into the integrated plan that come through and into Hartford and to the Hartford Treatment Plant. So that's kind of where we are. We still, I have another meeting coming this week with DEEP. I'm just, you know, so we've been asked by the legislature, by our commission, by DEEP, what can you do and what can you do starting in, in this July? Shovels in the ground. What we have proposed, and again, this was not part of the original integrated plan, is to, you've got a map in your, and I apologize for the size, but you have a map in your air, in your, in your little presentation? And there's large blocks of areas, magenta in the Blue Hills, Granby area, blue in the north Main Street area, there's a yellow in the Gully Brook area, there's, these areas, presently, there was no funding for private property work. So when I say private property work, I mean our Backwater Val program, our sump pump program, lining or replacing the laterals. Presently, MDC's ordinances, we don't own the responsibility of replacing a lateral. A lateral could cost anywhere up to $10,000 to replace. So this program would replace the lateral or it would line it, whatever one was, made sense for the, for the property. And those shaded areas represent about 67 million dollars that we didn't budget for, right? It's not part of the plan, it's not part of what the, what the council approved in December of 2018. And we're, we're expecting DEEP to give us 50% grant. So they've agreed to that, except we've said, but you, where's the other 50% coming from? Either I got to raise the rate for, for everyone, including Hartford-based residents, it doesn't make any sense to give a community benefit to the Hartford residents when they have to pay for it, right? So we've said, raising our rate is, is unacceptable, we're not going to raise our rates. So therefore you must give us grant money for all the other work that we're proposing to do. So that's the first areas. The other areas that, that they asked us for, you know, what can you do in separation? Well, we can't do anything in the magenta colored area, that's Blue Hills, Granby, that was the first area that we're going to separate over a 10-year period and that was going to eliminate the overflows to the north branch of the Park River, but we need to do the study first. So we picked areas that did not need a study and there's five streets, they're highlighted in blue checkered marks on, on your, on your map and those streets were Westland Street, Durham Street, Woodstock Street, Windsor Ave and Branford Street in Hartford. So the goal is, we can go out there, start separating and we don't need to do any studies and we can start being out there in, in this coming summer. However, again, we had to say to DEEP, the only way we can do that is you need to approve and jump through bureaucracy through the state. So we have three on-call contractors that we use for all of our other sewer replacements and we've already bid that, they're already, they're already working for us. So we, DEEP has agreed to let us use those contractors and we will, there's some modifications we need to make to the contract so that DEEP is satisfied with the, with the, with the boilerplate, the language. We've also made a commitment at the legislature, at the commission and, and here tonight and publicly, that our goal is to include 30% Hartford-based workforce, which MDC has never done before. I've done it personally at Adrian's Landing, we did that through Adrian's Landing, we did, the legislature passed $10 million of money to be spent on Hartford-based contractors and workforce, we're proposing to do that here. We're also proposing to do all this private property work with as many, as, sorry, as many minority Hartford-based contractors as we can find. We've been meeting with a number of different groups, we just met with Minority Construction Council, Council today, we've met with the old Hartford jobs funnel, Yolanda Rivera, we've met with DOT and a, and a Hartford high school program where they've developed apprenticeships for high school kids, seniors. So there's a number of different avenues that we're trying to build capacity within the city, Hartford-based contractors and Hartford-based residents that we can utilize on this proposal. So the other areas that we've talked about, again, we need 50% grant and we've asked for that, that's about a $17 million for the separation of those five streets, we're asking for 50% grant. And then everywhere else in Hartford that's not shaded, white, we're asking for $12 million a year to line or replace everyone's lateral. Our position is, one of the best things you can do on the Clean Water Project is to line an existing sewerpipe, we've done it in a number of areas, we did it here on Main Street, and also line the lateral to the home, because the majority of the stormwater, our position is, and I believe EPA and DEEP now agree with us, why not get the stormwater out where the source, where it's coming from, instead of collecting it at the river? Why build a big tunnel to collect it at the river? We're proposing to eliminate it at the source, which is the home, resident or the street. Then long-term, there's a, in the magenta area, there's a, a dark shaded maroon area, those are projects that were planned to be done but not at this time. So we're proposing to move them up in the schedule. And what needs to happen to, to date is we need DEEP to agree in writing, our board needs to approve that, because remember, the, the integrated plan, as the chairman mentioned, was already approved by our board and by DEEP in December of '22. Now we're going to change everything. So we're running and chewing gum at the same, gum at the same time, we're trying to build a capacity for minority participation with contractors, plumbers, electricians, sidewalks, paving, and we're trying to get shovels in the ground by this July. I think I'm done.
Thank you for that thorough explanation. You were saying, Mr. Dibella?
That's been the shortest dissertation in the last 10 years.
Clear and thorough. So I am going to open it up to my council colleagues, Majority Leader Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for being here and Mr. Jealouson and Attorney Stone, thank you for your presence. I have just want to get my questions out of the way. Going back to the map, then the magenta color and there's an overlay with this darker shade, do you have the timeline, because that was, that's the area that's been most affected, do you have the timeline as to when construction will take place? You said it's going to be moved up?
Yeah, thank you. So when I say moved up, right, so when we talk about phase one of that magenta area, we were talking in the next 10 years. So, so all of this North Hartford project area was in the phase one, the next 10 years to eliminate the overflows to the north branch of the Park River. So the shaded area represents really three project areas, we call it Granby 7, Granby 8 and Granby 9. Granby 7 was part of the original plan within that 10 years, the other two projects were, were not. So we're moving those Contract 8 and Contract 9 up into that 10-year period. So our goal is to have this whole magenta area separated within the next eight to 10 years.
That, that's the Blue Hills area.
Granby area.
Now with that, that, that construction, how is the construction going to take place? Is it going to take place like it was with the beginning of the Clean Water Act when Granby Street was entirely dug up and then you were putting pipes in the road or has the technology changed that it's going to be less, less construction from the surface level?
Thank you, great question. So as you all might remember, the painful project, we call it Granby 2-5. Granby 2-5 started in 2015 and then it took three years to build five streets in a Granby area along the Plainfield intersection of Granby area. And though, what we learned about that project was, we bit off more than we could chew, there was too much construction, too many streets, too much disruption, even though it's a residential neighborhood, there's no businesses, we're still dealing with parking, residential parking. So we realized that that was not a good thing, we're not going to repeat that. The, the goal that we have for this area is, we don't want to just separate it, we want it to be effective. So Granby 2-5 in the August 19th, 2021 storm, you would have people say, and it's true, you would have people say, you separated my area, I spent three years in construction, parking somewhere else and I still had flooding. They didn't get sewage backed up into their homes, but they had flooding coming through their basement windows, coming through their, their garage doors, coming through their front door. So they were protected from the sewer, but they weren't protected from the storm and the storm system. And one of the reasons is because it was the first project and the, the, the infrastructure to follow is necessary to get that separated stormpipe to the north branch of the Park River. And so when you do these separation projects, you might do one area, but you got, you need a puzzle, it's a puzzle, you got to put all these projects together over a 10-year period and eventually you have a system that has all of the resources it needs to be effective. The, as you probably heard, a lot of stories about phase four of the, Westbrook Village, one of the biggest problems that MDC had with that development was, they were trying, they needed to connect to an existing storm system that was going to surcharge that very pipe that I just talked about that was serving this two, Granby 2-5 area. And we said, we can't allow that to happen because you're going to make something worse than it already is. About a year and a half of negotiations, they finally agreed, they stepped up and said, okay, we're going to build our own outfall for phase four and then phase five and six that will go directly to the north branch of the Park River. So that's the things we're concerned about, but it does take time, Councilman, to, to not just do a separation project, but then put all the puzzle pieces together to achieve the total goal.
Thank you, yeah, because I had meetings with the Westbrook Development Team regarding that and being that this is the area that I live, I know many people are concerned just to reliving the Granby 2-5 project, which was not a, not a good, not a good moment. Also too, regarding, you mentioned back the fact regarding the minority contractors and I believe there was, going back to when this Clean Water separation process, process took place, you remember that there were petitions and people picketing outside?
Yes.
How is the MDC prepared to not relive that, that moment? I know that you mentioned that the, you mentioned, you met with the Minority Construction Council and Jobs Funnel and some other entities. Is there a way now for a minority contractor to easily get a job versus how it was before? Because I think it was sourced out to the, to the PM and the PM subcontracted, subcontracted to the CM, so there was more difficulties to secure a job on-site.
Yes, so, so the MDC has done a great job in building partnerships with not only the Minority Construction Council, but the Construction Institute and we've been very successful in our minority participation. The problem is, like the city of Hartford, when, when the city of Hartford bids out a paving project and you're getting state and federal funding, you cannot dictate that the, that the paving contractor hires 30% local workforce or a percentage of minority contractors in Hartford. We're in the same predicament, we have the same mandates. So, but with this recent agreement with, with, with DEEP and the legislature, they support the efforts of actually identifying local Hartford-based minority contractors to, to do this private property work. And we don't, we want to build capacity, so I said this today, I was intimately involved in Adrian's Landing and unfortunately, the legislature, or fortunately, the legislature gave, you know, $10 million to go hire Hartford-based contractors and, and a workforce. And that didn't really happen, right? It didn't really build capacity, there was a lot of larger contractors hiring local individuals representing as a minority contractor, but it really didn't do its job, it didn't build capacity. We don't want to, we don't want to replicate that, we want to actually build capacity. We've identified four local Hartford minority plumbers, we're actually meeting with them, I believe it's tomorrow, we're trying to engage them before we bid this work so that they understand, we've asked support of our Hartford-based commissioners to give us names, make sure that we're inclusive, we're doing everything we can. The workforce piece has never been part of our, our, our program, our procurement program because we can't, but they have allowed us to do that under this proposal.
Thank you for the explanation, I have just a couple. You mentioned that you don't want to foresee, you do not want to have another rate increase. Quite frankly, I agree because my pockets can't afford another rate increase. However, how, what's the other 50%, how is that going to be funded?
So in your, in this proposal, you'll see, we're asking for, for example, in the shaded areas, these shaded areas, those large shaded areas in Hartford and throughout the other towns, when we're doing rehab, when we say rehab, it's not separation, it's just fixing the old pipes, it might be a point repair, you know, two or three, when we did the lining here in Hartford on Main Street, we had about three point repairs, we had to fix the pipe before we could line it, that's rehab. We usually only get 20% grant for that, we've asked for 50% grant. And then we've also asked for projects that we would get 50%, we're asking for 75%. And the only other option, and DEEP has already told us, 75% grant for those projects is not acceptable, we said, okay, that's fine, but you're going to have to push other projects. They've agreed to let us push the tunnel, we were supposed to build a tunnel in 2040 for the downtown area. Our position is, and I think DEEP and EPA agree with us, tunnels are a waste of money because you've, you're not fixing the problem, just catching the problem. Our solution is to separate every street in Hartford and build infrastructure like stormwater infrastructure. You have stormwater problems on Albany Avenue, you have stormwater problems on, on Blue Hills Avenue, you have stormwater problems on North Main Street, you have stormwater problems on Broad Street, real stormwater problems, not going to get solved by separation. You need significant infrastructure, we proposed in 2018. We proposed in two thousand thirteen, uh, to partner with the DOT in the city of Hartford to build a seventy-two-inch storm pipe down Albany Avenue. That's the solution for Albany Avenue. The decision at the time was, "No, we can't afford it," or "No, we didn't want to do it." It wasn't mandated, "We can't spend our clean water money on stormwater-related projects." It has to be associated with, with CSO. So, just think of it this way. Our pipes are so big. Whatever stormwater gets in our sewer pipe is ours. We cannot let it out of our pipe, okay? That's our job to keep it in the pipe. Anything that can't get in the pipe because we have August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, we had seven inches of rain in five hours, a two-hundred-and-forty-four-year storm, that's not our, we're not regulated to, to build a bigger storm pipe. So, that's where the city, and in these cases, these are state roads, this DOT has to step in and support the city on these types of projects.
That, that was part of the problem is that Blue Hills, Albany Avenue, uh, North Main Street, and I believe, I don't know about Broad Street, but those are state highways and they've got an obligation, the state of Connecticut DOT, to provide adequate flood control on those streets. And they're critical. Albany Avenue needs a seventy-two-inch pipe and so do the other streets that the, uh, Chief, Chief Executive Officer is talking about. And they also need additional catch bases to, to take that water when it comes at such short periods of time in large quantities. So, that's a significant part. And the other part is on separation. Aren't you going to talk about shorter spans so we don't create the congestion that we created in the, in the, uh, Main Street?
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, that, that's our goal is, is if you, if everyone remembers two thousand eight through two thousand thirteen, we spent about eighty-five million dollars separating. There's been a lot of reports that we haven't done anything in North Hartford. That's not true. We spent about eighty-five million dollars separating Cigany Streets, the, um, Albany Avenue areas, uh, Burton Street, Edgewood Street. All those streets have been separated. So, we spent about eighty-five million in those areas. We also spent about seventy-five million in Franklin Avenue. So, it's not true that we haven't spent any time in North Hartford. We have. But lessons learned. It was painful and it was just, uh, we will, we will not, we've, we've got a lot of history behind us to understand. Don't do that again. So.
I have one more question because I know my colleagues want to ask. So, this document that you provided to us, I believe is a good start. Now, how does this coincide with the proposed amendment that the General Assembly is now considering regarding Hartford County that Speaker Ritter and his team have been, have put together?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councilman. It's a great question. Uh, we received, uh, last week, we received the first draft of a proposal to take what was Senate Bill one-one-three-nine and replace that with the bill you're talking about that would provide some relief not only to individual homeowners, but also to general areas in North Hartford, provide some funding to the MDC, some funding to Deep for both projects, both arts, construction projects, as well as assisting individual homeowners. So, uh, that was a first draft. Just four-thirty this afternoon, I received the second draft, uh, which we will comment on. We'll be meeting tomorrow on, on that. But that's moving along. I know that Speaker Ritter is, this is a high priority for him. It's a high priority for his office. And, um, we're hoping that what, what was once a bill, quite frankly, that we could not support, will become a bill that we can wholeheartedly support and see that it, it is passed by the General Assembly.
Thank you, Attorney Stone.
Good news on that front so far.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Mixton?
Thank you, Madam President. As we've heard about this as a council, this problem of flooding, we've heard a lot about it happening in the north end. I think we've also heard from constituents in other parts of the city. I mean, I know in Parkville, a lot of basements on my block flood. But it does seem like it's most acute in the north end and overall more acute in the city than in the surrounding towns that are part of the MDC. And I guess my question is, why?
If, if I may, Scott Jellison. That's not true. So, here's what's happened. There's been a lot of press around August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And there were seven inches of rain that fell in five hours. And we, as you all know, uh, we've got videos of three feet of water on Albany Avenue. It literally looked like the ocean. They had waves on Albany Avenue. The water was coming in through the front doors of, of the businesses and through, um, residential homes. There is no system that is anywhere in the world or that the MDC could build and that we could afford to accommodate that storm. So, ironically, there isn't a lot of flooding on Albany Avenue. And the chairman mentioned it. Albany Avenue is about two miles long. There's only fifty catch basins on Albany Avenue. The Albany Avenue catch basins limit the amount of water that gets into our system. So, therefore, we have very little stormwater sewer surcharging on Albany Avenue, despite all of the, the press because the majority of the, the things that you have heard had nothing to do with the MDC sewer system surcharging a home or a business. So, that's the first fact. West Hartford probably has more surcharging in homes than Hartford. And it's, it, it's because Hartford, um, uh, we, we have a lot of backwater valves in Hartford. But we also have in West Hartford, uh, as, and we've talked about this numerous times, our surrounding communities that, if you look in this report, we say that any, any one of our eight-member towns that feed their sewer system into Hartford, so it's not Rocky Hill, it's not East Hartford, it's not Windsor, and it's, it's part of Weathersfield, doesn't come into Hartford. But their stormwater that is being generated from their town does in fact come into Hartford. And so, I'll use West Hartford as the example. West Hartford, on a dry day, they use about eight million gallons on average of drinking water a day. So, when you drink the water, you go to the bathroom, you flush the toilet. So, they, they drink about eight million gallons of water a day. They consume eight million gallons of water a day. So, they, they send us about eight million gallons of sewer a day. It matches, right? Pretty close. But on a wet day, when it rains, like yesterday, they send us eighty million gallons of water. Why? Well, because all of our towns, except maybe West Hartford and, I'm sorry, East Hartford and maybe Windsor, all of our homes in these areas are built on a clay base. There's no way for water to drain. So, the homes that were built throughout the nineteen hundreds, eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, their footing drains, their rain leaders, all come into the sewer system, even though they're not supposed to, but they do. And those, all of that stormwater on a rainy day comes into our system and not only, so eighty million gallons of West Hartford doesn't get to the MDC because it physically can't. It can't fit in the pipe. So, where does it go? It goes into their basements. It goes into their streets. And, and, but their pipe consumes Hartford's pipe. And so, now Hartford can't discharge its sewer because of the surrounding towns discharging their combined storm to us. So, the, the goal is to remove the stormwater. But that is factually not correct. I apologize, but it's, it's a perception, but it's not true. And I also heard a perception that MDC doesn't address, uh, surcharging in basements in Hartford the way that we do in the other towns. That's again, not true. Major, a lot of my staff live in Hartford. And so, we don't take favorites. We, we treat everyone the same with dignity and respect and we provide a service to everyone the same way.
Just, just to be clear, I, I don't, I don't think any of us are just talking about the twenty-twenty-one storm.
No, I understand.
We've been hearing about this.
Got it.
Situations where there's no water on the street.
Yeah.
I speak personally about Parkville.
Sure.
There's no water on the street, but we have water coming up through the, the discharge pipe into our basement.
Yes. Yep, I, I don't disagree with you and, uh, that is a scenario of, again, you have, um, uh, Parkville is the Trinity area, right?
No, Parkville's almost on the West Hartford line.
Yeah, it's, it's part of Broad Street though, right?
Yeah. No.
Not really.
It's, it's over the West Hartford line.
You have, remember, you have the, the, the system that's, um, you're using is being, the capacity of your pipe in your street is being consumed by the town ahead of you. That's what's happening.
You're dumb, you're dumb.
You're downstream of a larger community. And you remember, you don't have to have it rain. If you think about Hartford was built as a combined sewer system, it was intended to be that, right? And that's fine. You've got one pipe and all the stormwater from the streets, from the basements, from the homes, from the gutters, is all going to that sewer system. But the other towns are doing the same thing. And so, when you have a, a day like, uh, Saturday, rained all day, it might not be raining Sunday, but your footing drains are still working. It's still absorbing that groundwater that came in and it's still discharging it to your system that you're trying to utilize. So, that is a challenge and that's why we need to get the stormwater out of not just Hartford, but the other towns.
Just, just a footnote on that because if you take three towns that funnel into Hartford, two and a half. West Hartford, you heard on a rainy day, is eighty million. You're getting three-point-five million on a dry day in Newington. On a wet day, you're getting thirty-five million. In West, Weathersfield, half of it goes into Hartford and half of it goes into Rocky Hill. So, you've got two and a half million there. There's another five hundred, fifty, uh, fifty million. So, you've got a, a total in those three towns of a hundred and forty million gallons of water that's going in to a sanitary sewer that it doesn't belong in. That gets to Hartford. The pipes just aren't big enough to, to get into a plant, even though that plant is designed, it went from what, seventy thousand, seventy million to a hundred and fifty?
Eighty, yeah, eighty million to two hundred million.
Two hundred million. You can't get it all into that facility because of the, the structure. And we never had that kind of, um, stormwater coming in. West Hartford's stormwater system is very limited. They have, after five years of back and forth with us on this issue, they're still violating deep EPA and MDC's regulations by dumping that much stormwater into, into a sanitary sewer. And, uh, they've just, what was it, three hundred and seventy million dollars that they've allocated over?
Well, they've identified three hundred.
Identified. Uh, and that's only for one-third of the town. So, you can see how significant that cost is going to be borne by that community as we go down the road on this issue.
Moles, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam President.
Assistant Majority Rizetti?
Thank you, Council President. CEO Jellison, um, I want to go back to Clean Water Project. And certainly, that was before your time. You know, Chairman Tabella and Attorney Stone were there. And I was one of the original people on the Clean Water Project Community Group that met in your, tragically, a lot of the people are dead. And I think back to those times though, which is not exactly what we're talking about now, but the intense community effort that was put into that, the really, you know, specific way that, because it was complicated. When you talk about it now, it's all coming back to me. You know, the, you know, sewer separation, you know, the hundred-year flood. It was, you know, really fascinating actually. But it took a lot of time, energy, effort, talking. And I think we always experience this here. We had another, uh, entity come before us recently about a huge project that's going to happen in the city. And we've said, "We need to make sure we're prepared and we need to make sure that," my Council President will say, "If they see a truck from that entity, they'll know why it's there." So, I know that doesn't exactly address this situation, but when I look at, and again, you know, you're in the business for these kind of maps, okay? But when I look at this, this isn't helpful for me. It's confusing, it's, uh, small. And I can't really see it. So, it would be great if there were things that were really well laid out. You said a lot of stuff. You know, and I was starting to try to write it all down about timelines. People want to know that information in a well-laid-out way. There's still a separate issue of how you get to that, but I'm also thinking, how do we present it? You know, these are the things that, that you can do.
Yes.
That don't cost a lot of money. So, you know, when you talk about, uh, you know, a ten-year timeline, just a question, does that mean nothing's done till ten years? Or incrementally is it done along the way?
Yeah, if, if I may.
Yep.
Thank you. So, we haven't presented this publicly yet, right? So, we have met with the NR, uh, Blue Hills, Granby NRZs. And the challenge that we have right now is we're in a dilemma. We have a plan that was approved by the state of Connecticut, by EPA, by this council, by our board, and by seven other councils. And now Deep is asking us to change that completely. So, uh, we've been meeting with the legislature three or four times. Funding, no funding, all that good stuff. And so, we're in, we're on hold right now to really figure out what is Deep going to do for the funding because our position was, "We will not raise the rates." So, until that time, I can't present this publicly because one of my mandates with our, our Clean Water Project, the CAC, as you referenced, is we have to communicate that. We were supposed to have a public meeting in April of this year. And we canceled it because we're in the middle of this turmoil. So, I agree a hundred, a hundred percent with you. We have a presentation that we have given. We will be prepared to do that, but we're just not prepared yet.
So, Council President, I'll leave you with this. So, I would encourage you though, to continue to, to simplify.
Sure.
Not because, because we're not, you know, intelligent.
Yeah, I understand.
But this is heady stuff.
Yep.
And people are able to ask questions if they understand what they're looking at. And this needs to be laid out in a way that I think is much more simplistic for people to understand with clear timelines, so then people know what you're working towards. And I understand what you're saying. But I think that can be done because it was done in the past.
Yes.
When we had to build those different infrastructures on New Field, New Britton Avenue, you know, Weathersfield Cove. Those were some times where people were very concerned and the neighborhood was very involved. So, that's all. I would encourage you to continue to do that in way. Thank you, Council.
We will do that. And just to say, I'd, I'd apologize, but I agree with you. In the CAC that you're referring to, we planned for four years to actually do this construction. We have done exactly that. And now the state legislature, the, uh, Deep and EPA asked us to change what we were going to do. So, we're really starting from scratch in terms of what we were prepared to present to the public. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Just, just one more issue from a historical perspective. In nineteen fifty-five, the United States government decided that they had to do something about interstate highways and they created the Interstate Highway Program. Along with that program, they also created a subsidy for sewer and water in the United States of America. And it, it was the same, the same funding pattern. Eighty percent from the federal government, twenty percent from the, uh, state and local contribution. Today, the Interstate Highway Program still is in effect. You still get an eighty percent, twenty percent subsidy. Think back, if you got nothing from the federal government to build the highway system that we have in this country, what it would cost the local people. The significant part of that was in nineteen seventy-seven, the federal government decided to get out of this subsidy for water and sewer. A hundred percent out. Instead of an eighty, twenty subsidy, we get nothing from them in that, in that national program that was similar to what we got from the highway program. So, that's a significant issue from a federal standpoint that we don't get money at the same proportion that highways do. In fact, we don't, we get probably less than two or three percent. A lot of that is in what we're getting, uh, from the state under the Clean Water Program. That's part of the state subsidy back to us. So, those are some of the problems that mounted up. And fifty years later, you don't have that kind of subsidy coming to us over that fifty-year period. And this is what happens when you have environmental changes and we don't have the ability to get federal subsidies on it.
Councilman LeBrun?
Thank you, Madam President, through you.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. So I appreciate this plan. I appreciate the spirit of what it's intended on doing and rectifying the issue that we are continuing to experience in the North End of Hartford. And I also appreciate the contractor initiatives or the intention on having contractors from Hartford. I do want to echo the sentiments of my Council colleague, Councilwoman Rosetti in that it's confusing. There's a lot of acronyms in here. So you have LTCP, which stands for Transmission Control Protocols, IP, SSO, CWF, ROW, CWPC, CSO. I mean, so there's just a lot of acronyms. And in order for me to digest this accurately, I think, or anyone to digest it accurately, we need kind of a breakdown of what those acronyms are in order for, at least for myself, to be able to ask appropriate questions because I feel like there's a lot of blanks missing because of that. So, but thank you for the spirit. August 19th, 2021 is a memorable day for me. It was the day that my father-in-law was, it was his funeral that day. And my father-in-law was very important to me. He was a father to me. And so the day of his funeral, I remember it intimately because people were late. They couldn't get to De Leon. We were late in terms of getting to the funeral, so we almost missed, he was an Army. So, you know, the gun salute and all that stuff. So I just remember how much the flooding impacted us personally that day. So I remember that intimately. So the first question I have in regards to the flooding is, did other towns have as much as significant flooding on that 100-year day?
Yes, they did. Weathersfield and Newington and West Hartford are prone to flooding as well. And as you can imagine, I'll just use an example of, I've already talked about West Hartford, so I'll pick on somebody else, Newington. Newington's groundwater table on a dry day is 10 feet higher than our sewer pipe. So imagine our sewer pipe's down here and the water table's up here. So the pipe is underwater, under pressure. And so if you have cracks in that pipe because of age, the water is seeping in. So that's our job. Our job as the MDC is to fix that cracked pipe. And that's how we line the pipe or replace the pipe. But even more importantly, like what's happening in West Hartford, and the chairman mentioned this, I live, I've got this home, I've got water coming into my basement because I've got a sump pump and I'm pumping the water and I'm making it worse. And I'm pumping it into the MDC sewer system, really to no avail because you're just cycling that water. But surcharging occurs in those towns as well.
So in your estimation, it was comparable, the amount of flooding that they had in Newington?
I would say, I would say yes. I mean, they didn't have, you know, they probably didn't have a street with like Albany Avenue with two feet of water or three feet of water in it. But you've got to remember Albany Avenue is a large street. And as, this is per DOT. DOT said in 2008, there needs to be 50 more catch basins on Albany Avenue. So, but you can't put 50 more catch basins and not make a new stormpipe. You can't add it to the existing infrastructure in the ground. So the lack of catch basins on Albany Avenue is causing the flooding on top of the street. And that is, you know, it's a DOT issue, it's a DOT road. And I've had conversations with DOT, with the city of Hartford, and, you know, it needs to be resolved at the city of Hartford and DOT level. We're happy, as we did in 2013, you probably have seen my emails to the city that basically said the MDC, under our Clean Water Project, would incorporate this stormwater pipe as part of our project. But we can't pay for it. We can, we'll perform it, we'll do it for the city and for DOT, but the decision at the time from DOT and the city was not to do the work.
Okay. So through you, Madam President, what about, so the 100-year storm, I get it. What about the other days when the basements are flooding in the North End? What happens on those days in Hartford?
So obviously, the majority of, if a home gets flooded in North Hartford like for example, on a storm like we had, the storm that we just had on Saturday, we got two inches of rain in 12 hours. So seven inches of rain in five hours is a 244-year storm. Can't, you can't protect from it, right? Except the backwater valve. A two-year storm, we had zero flooding, we had zero backups, okay? And as you and I have talked and you supported me at the meeting we had, and I, litter was a topic here tonight, litter was a topic, I went down to Frog Hollow the other night, it's a topic. And if you keep the streets clean, the system's going to operate the best it can. But the system can't operate when the streets aren't clean. The system can't operate when our catch basins are full of garbage. So it's a partnership, right? It's a partnership. And any design, any storm system designed across Connecticut, and the Connecticut DOT uses federal regulations, the storm systems are only sized to a 10-year storm. 244-year storm. So the goal is, is to make sure that our system can work up to a 10-year storm.
So this plan would alleviate the regular sewage backups in people's homes?
To a 10-year storm.
To a 10-year storm.
Sorry, it'll eliminate sewer backups in homes, period.
Okay.
But the storm system will only be sized to a 10-year storm. So you might have the stormwater, it'd be clean stormwater, you might have stormwater coming out of manholes and coming out of catch basins, but it will not come into the home because of our backwater valve system. And so that's the goal.
Okay. And so, Mr. Jellison, CEO Jellison, you mentioned, and maybe this might be a question for Mr. Stone, in terms of legislatively, right? We see, we got Senate Bill and Speaker of the House Ritter, you know, trying to do things to help residents in the North End. But you used the term bureaucracy. And so what, how are we, MDC, how is MDC advocating at a state level? The lobbying plan, what are we doing? What are our efforts fighting for the residents of Hartford at the state capitol? What does that lobbying plan look like? What, you know, how does that work? Do you work with the state? Do you work with residents to help remediate the issue? Can you just?
There are, if I might, thank you for that question, Councilman. There are a whole host of stakeholders on this very important issue, okay? So the MDC doesn't stand alone. And certainly DEEP has been our partner in the Clean Water Project. And thus far, over the past several weeks, they've shown a favorable ear to what we've proposed and what Speaker Ritter would like to do for the people of North Hartford. But there's the people that live it. There's the advocates that represent the people who live it. There's the outreach people that we have on our staff that live it. We're, once we get a final product, and as I said, I just got the second draft today, but once we get a final project that hopefully everyone will sign off on because everyone's got to give a little, and hopefully the people of the North End will get a lot. But, but once we have a final product, we have lobbyists, as you know, on staff. The chairman works on our behalf at the legislature. I work on the MDC's behalf at the legislature. And the goal here is for the MDC as a public works entity, it's basically a public works entity, to do the work. Everyone will contribute in terms of paying for the work, but to do the work as quickly and as expeditiously as we can, as cost-effective as we can. There's no way, as Scott pointed out, that you're ever going to build a stormwater system that's going to handle a 2-year storm. It's just, it's just impossible. This bill saying that I use often is you can engineer anything. It's engineering the most cost-effective, most effective public work. That's the goal. So we have our standards, we're going to comply with those standards. We have an aggressive lobbying team. They will be on board and directed to not only work with the Hartford delegation, but we've got seven other member towns that have a piece of this. Whether it's the lateral replacement aligning program, which is district-wide, or it's doing the right thing for its major, its primary, its largest member of the MDC. It's not, the people in the North End aren't experiencing what they're experiencing just because it happens in the North End, right? As Scott pointed out, there's contributions from West Hartford, from Newington, from Weathersfield, even from the sewer shed in Bloomfield. Stormwater is a surface water issue and it comes down from Bloomfield. So, and they contribute to the Park River, which needs work. So it's, the one town that has a separate sewer system that does not contribute to the Hartford problem directly is East Hartford. But East Hartford has been a willing participant in the funding of the Clean Water Project and I'm sure will do what's right to continue that with what we're doing in the North End. So short answer to your question is, we intend, once we have a bill that we can all support, that we feel is in the best interest of the community, we intend to be aggressive in supporting it.
Thank you. So I think within that answer, Attorney Stone.
Somewhere.
I think within that answer, I think you said, so is it MDC's position that you guys agree with appropriate compensation for the residents of the North End who've been suffering from flooding? Do you guys agree with them being compensated?
Well, if you've read either version of the bill, and I skimmed it about, while I was listening to the prior presentation, there is a component there for people who have been affected to be compensated. That's not from MDC funds, that's from a fund that'll be managed by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection through a governor-appointed, I'll call it a magistrate or arbiter, who will decide the merits of any claim and decide the amount of compensation for any claim. There's a participation aspect for the MDC in terms of inspections, which we will be compensated for, but which we will obviously participate in. But in terms of the actual compensation, that's not, was not on the MDC.
No, no, I understand.
Wasn't even on the city of Hartford.
Yeah, I understand that, Attorney Stone. I guess the question is, is it MDC's position, would they favor? Let me, are you in support of the bill for the North End residents to get compensation?
Well, I'll speak to my commission.
Sure.
For me, that component of the bill is not a game, is not a deal breaker for me in terms of my personal support, but obviously it's up to my commission and my government committee. It's a part of it that really, I will tell you, I do not envy the person that has to arbitrate those claims. Because not all of those claims are necessarily caused by a faulty infrastructure, a broken lateral within a person's home, or something that's outside their control, a large storm event, which is outside everyone's control. So they'll have to determine in terms of their inspection, investigation, the merits of the claim as well as the amount that should be.
Yeah. So last question, Madam President. So there's a few things in the air and I just want to land on it and then I move on. So there seems to be a distinction, right? Because there's the commission and then there's the MDC, the operations, right? There's the commission and the MDC. So, and then, Mr. Jellison, you stated, you know, you got DOT involvement, city of Hartford involvement. But I'm just going to ask this question to the commission and to the CEO, if you guys can answer it independently. In hindsight, I love sports, right? So I like to play Monday morning quarterback, right? In hindsight, is there anything that the MDC could have done differently to prevent what is currently plaguing the North End residents with the poop in their basement? And that's for you, Mr. Jellison, and you, Mr. Chair, DeBella, if you guys can answer that independently.
If I'll start.
Sure, thank you.
So again, this is really important, right? The MDC was mandated to do something. And something had nothing to do with poop in basements. It had to do with protecting the river. The benefits of the basement was a side benefit, so to speak, of the Clean Water Project. So whatever we did, however we did it, if we separated parts of, all of Edgewood and Sigourney and, yes, those community, that community, that street benefited immediately. But the, but the challenge is that, as I mentioned, when you have this large area and you've got to do five separation projects to see any benefit on the first street that you started, it's a challenge. But it doesn't necessarily mean that our intent, our goal is to stop overflows in the basements or in the streets. It's to do a very specific thing to protect the river. So if we were to say, we always use the term one-year storm, and I'm just going to use round numbers, right? We have 84 overflows that go to the river in Hartford. Roughly half of them are in the South End, the rest of them are in the North End. We are only designing the system, the $1.6 billion we've spent to date, the billions of dollars we'll spend in the future, the original intent was only to protect the Connecticut River up to a one-year storm. Elimination of overflows to the Weathersfield Cove on Franklin Avenue, there's five overflows on Franklin Avenue, and four elimination of overflows to the North British Park River, that's it. Can you imagine if we designed the system to protect up to a 10-year storm? Multiply by 10. That's the point. And so what we're saying now is, now that we got everybody's attention and we've been saying this for a long time since 2004, instead of protecting the river, let's take the stormwater out where it's coming in from, which is the home, the businesses and the streets. And I believe that MDC has got the attention of DEEP and EPA through the integrated plan. All of the publicity that we've been discussing has made it even better in terms of the regulators' understanding that protecting the river in a very short timeframe, and when I say short timeframe, you know, 10 years versus, building the tunnel takes 10 years. Separating enough area to accommodate the same goal of a tunnel takes 40 years. And that's why the regulators say, I'm not waiting 40 years to protect the river, I want it now. And that's what we have been faced with. And to your question, is there anything we could have done? We tried. 2012, our plan submitted, took three years. We didn't get approval until 2015. We submitted in 2018, we didn't get approval until 2022. And we're still, as we speak, talking about throwing everything we discussed and it got approved in 2022, and we're changing it based on this. I'm going to leave you with this one thing, it's really important. If we get DEEP to fund what we've asked for here, that's great for North Hartford. But three years from now, when they stop the funding and they don't fund this document as it's proposed everywhere else, we're going to have to raise the rate for Hartford and everybody else. So I ask this council to make sure that whatever DEEP does, they, if they're going to agree to this, they're going to have to agree to the funding levels for all of the projects. Because that's how we pay for the 50% that we're not and never budgeted for. It's very, very important. And so I don't know if I answered your question.
So it sounds like you said yes with an asterisk.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. DeBella, did you, did you want to add? If from the commission side, was there anything that, from a commission level? Because I realize that it is a unique, is a quasi-public, you know, agency, so you do have the commission.
It's a municipality.
Yeah, municipality. Is there anything that could have been done different on the commission side?
No, I think Scott threw it in perspective as well, because of what's happened historically. I think we've got to also understand.
Give him the mic.
Historically, we've got to understand what's happened in the past, but what's, more importantly, what's going to happen in the future. We've got people's attention now, we're talking about a solution, but we're not talking about a solution that's going to resolve everything. And I think Scott put that in perspective, that it's a question of being able to get the appropriate funding to continue to do what we're doing if this is adopted. But again, you've got an enormous situation with groundwater, which wasn't the original intent of where we are now. It was to protect the river and Long Island Sound. So that perspective. So that perspective is turned, and now we just gotta make sure we can find enough funding to continue the program at the level if they approve this increase in level.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. I think that was a yes, like the turning of from the river to the residents. Uh, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
But just, just let me say one last thing. It's not just Hartford. This is happening to everybody. It's happening in West Hartford, it's happening throughout the whole, the whole district. So we've gotta work together as a regional body and probably talk about a regional stormwater, uh, system to pursue financial reimbursement from the federal government. That's a significant player, too.
Great, and I, I am looking forward to having more of these conversations, Mr. DeBella and Mr. Jealouson, where you can come back and give us an update to see how it's going up at, at the Capitol with, and, and with DEEP. Councilwoman Milka, I just wanna take a minute before I pass it on to you, um, and this is out of context, but, um, we have children in, in the audience that are gonna receive today a point of privilege. Bear with us for another ten minutes, and we'll be with you shortly, okay? Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hernandez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is, this is gonna be a quick question, uh, and only for my clarification. On page four and page six of the presentation, we have two graphs of, uh, projected, um, rate increases. I, just for my understanding, as I read the document, and I kinda read it now twice, going back and forth, trying to put the pieces together, on, on the what scenario the increases shown on page four on or on page six can become reality? So I assume that these increases have already taken into account the fifty percent, uh, state funded that has already, uh, um, agreed upon. Uh, I assume that because of the other fifty percent missing, then this is where we're seeing some of these, uh, projected, you know, rate increases. Um, what are, or, what are other factors that play into making these, uh, or for this to become potentially a reality? Just so that we're very clear, if this happens, no increases. However, if this doesn't happen, then you're gonna see increases at different levels.
Uh, thank you. So, um, and I understand it's a, you know, we have proposed a menu to DEEP. We said, listen, we can do this, and these are different scenarios, if this, then that, right? So to your question, uh, DEEP, we've, I've been, I've met with DEEP probably ten times since January, um, about this topic, and, um, what they have said last week was, one of the items identifies projects, uh, we need seventy-five percent, right, uh, grant money. And the reason why is because they're large projects, so we need, we need the seventy-five percent grant to help offset that fifty percent on the private property that we're not gonna get. They have said no to that. I said, okay, well, again, my goal is not to raise the rate on anyone. So what else has to give? Well, you're gonna have to allow us to push the downtown tunnel that was gonna be built in 2038, starting in 2038, uh, into the future. So they've agreed to let us do that. We pushed that tunnel out to 2058, and we're not gonna plan on building that, our goal is to just keep doing separation forever. Um, so those are the things that we're, we're dealing with, with DEEP. What I have said to DEEP is, if we can push the, this is a new scenario, that's not even here yet, because we proposed it to DEEP and we don't have any, any feedback from them. If we were able to push the tunnel to 2058, which is eight-hundred-million dollars, and the way that our revolving fund, our Clean Water Revolving Fund, works is, right now the, the, the rate is two dollars and thirty cents per CCF, right? So every portion of that is paying for projects today, and it's paying for future projects in the future. So let's just, just say, for example, seventy-five cents of the, of what you're paying today is to gather money enough be, to be prepared to build a eight-hundred-million-dollar tunnel in 2038. So our goal, we've said to DEEP is, if we push the tunnel out, because you're not gonna give us seventy-five percent grant, then I'm asking my engineers, and we're calculating this as we speak, is there a possibility of dropping the rate this year? And the question is, I don't know yet, but if we can, it's very important, because now we just literally drop the curve, the curve, the curve that's on these, uh, presentations. We're trying to lower that rate structure into the future. The goal is, if we can lower the rate, because we're pushing the tunnel out, the only way we can do that is if DEEP gives us the grant money for all the other projects, not in North Hartford, in West Hartford, Weathersfield, Newington, because that's how we're, we're, we're gathering the other revenue or the other costs that we weren't gonna pay for on private property. So, I hope I answered your question, but we've got a lot, we're juggling right now.
Yeah, so, so partially, partially, um, so by pushing the downtown tunnel to, to 2058, just by that one, um, um, potential change that they have agreed to, that's not enough to not raise the rates. You will also have to ask them to pay for those other projects?
Yes.
On the towns around Hartford.
Yes, exactly what says here. Any, any project that is in the Hartford shoe, the Hartford Sewer Shed, so any wa- any stormwater sewer that flows by pipe into the Hartford plant, we need what we've asked for, fifty percent grant, private property, fifty percent grant on the separation, fifty percent grant on the rehabilitation.
And lastly, what is the, what are the efforts right now on trying to somehow convince the federal government to do, fund private, uh, property, uh, you know, repairs? Because we're, all this time, we've been talking about the state and the state, you know, uh, carrying the burden, uh, not just the fifty percent, but the, the increase of seventy-five that you're asking for and the other alternatives. Um, are, are you doing anything to find other ways for the federal government to lift those, uh, regulations or those, uh, policies that they have in place that don't allow them to fund, uh, these kind of repairs?
So, yes, so we've met with the EPA a number of times in conjunction with DEEP. Um, initially, uh, EPA said, for example, dredging the river, fifty million dollars. Now, that fifty million dollars, um, we've said very clearly is a responsibility of the city of Hartford. We've also, uh, talked directly to EPA, and so has the city, that said, can we get federal funding? Initially, E- EPA said no. Then they came back and said, maybe. And now we're hearing that there's a possibility that the federal government will fund some portion of that dredging of that river. We don't know any details other than, you know, verbal conversations. But one thing they're clear on, they won't fund private property work, and it's because the regulatory mind, the regulations stated under the Clean Water Act of nineteen-seventy-four has nothing to do with stormwater. It's all about CSOs and sewer overflowing to a river.
So by funding some of the other areas that are not private property, wouldn't that release some funding to now move it to, to these private property repairs?
So, uh, so, um, the dredging of the river, we did not budget. The fifty million dollars is not budgeted. We're not, um, you know, the, 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 North Branch of the Park River is a waterway in the, in, in, in the city of Hartford, it's part of the Flood Control Commission, it's a component of flood control. So we can't use clean water funds unless DEEP tells us we can. Uh, if DEEP said, and EPA said, you can use clean water funds to, to, to fund that, then we'd have to ask the board, the other seven towns, do you support the funding? Because all the towns pay for that, right? So that's another topic that we haven't even gotten into, but we're still waiting to really hear, Councilman, as to what is the deal. We are, and I apologize for this, but it's, it's the truth, we, we're, we don't look prepared, because we're not. This is something that was brought upon us, it's completely different from what we were proposing to do, that we were planning to do, and we're trying to accommodate and try and do good within the community, uh, in a very short timeframe.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Surgeon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good evening, Mr. Jealouson, and good evening, Senator DeBella. Um, I know you, both you, everyone have no problems coming and making a presentation to the council. I don't wanna thank you very much for the time and coming and doing so. Um, due to the lateness of the, um, we're, passer getting ready, we've got lots of companies here, wonderful young ladies are here. Uh, if you don't mind, I would ask the privilege of calling or getting in touch with you in the next couple of days, and I can present my questions. But I just, I'm so impressed that our young people come out and see, um, our council in progress. And so, again, thank you very much, and then given the privilege again, of calling in a couple of days, and I can spend some time and get my question answers. But thank you so very much for wanting to come to the council and do a presentation.
And, and Madam President, we, we plan on coming back. Once we have a clearer picture from DEEP, we will be more than happy to come back, certainly call us anytime, but we'd be happy to come back on another occasion.
Thank, thank you. And I just, uh, out of courtesy, Councilwoman Hercules, do you have any questions now?
I do not, Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And so, um, thank you so much for the presentation. I do have some residents that, that did text me, I will send you both an email, and I look forward, uh, to seeing you gentlemen again, um, hopefully with, um, more great news on, on, on an update, um, on DEEP doing their part. So with that said, um, this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned, and I wanna thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the time to, um, spend with us here and answer these very important questions. A lot of clarity, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.